Lima City Council is brought to you in part by these fine sponsors.
Counsel to order will begin tonight's meeting with the implication by Counselor Adams, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we are meeting tonight to conduct matters of city business. Please guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. Impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance tonight. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Neper.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lowe.
Here.
Mr. Teppin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Ms. Townsend.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon.
Here. The consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that Item B on the consent calendar be received and filed, and Item A be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Item B, and to receive, file, and approve Item A. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding permit renewal objections.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that Communication number one be received or filed to refer to the administration to report back to council before April 22nd.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number one and to refer it to the administration for report back by April 22nd. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Director of Public Works requesting legislation to submit a track application to O.G.A.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that Communication number two be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number three.
From Chief Hefner regarding legislation to apply for an Ohio EMS grant program.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Communication number three receive and file legislation on the night agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Director of Community Development requesting a resolution of support for the South Main Street Corridor zoning overlay plan.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication number four be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Civil Service Board regarding the creation of a seasonal park ranger.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that Communication number five be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
To win community legislation.
And authorize legislation. The law director to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number five and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Civil Service Board regarding the creation of Assistant Building and Zoning Administrator.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that Communication number six be received and filed, and the law director authorized to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number six and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Deputy Law Director regarding legislation to amend various sections in Chapter 436 of the codified ordinances.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Communication number seven receive and file legislation on night agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. There are no petitions or reports of officials. We have a committee report from the Public Works Committee.
Mr. President, as all members have seen a copy of the minutes from the Public Works Committee meeting on March 14th, I will simply submit this report and ask that it be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve. The committee report is submitted by Counselor Neper. Is there any discussion? I have a quick question. Did this then remain in committee, and is there action expected?
Motion was taken this evening.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Resolution 213.
A resolution approving the South Main Street Corridor zoning overlay plan.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Resolution number 02-13 be adopted on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is that Resolution 213 be adopted on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
And Mr. Teppin.
Yes. Resolution 213 has been adopted on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 5013.
granting art space alignment permission to maintain and use the stage for the art space rally in the square series.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that ordinance 5013 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 5013 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
And Mr. Teppin.
Yes. Ordinance 5013 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 5113.
Authorizing the mayor to apply for, accept, and administer an Ohio emergency medical services grant for equipment and training for the fire department.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance 5113 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 5113 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
And Mr. Teppin.
Yes. Ordinance 5113 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 5213.
Authorizing the mayor to submit a track application to the Ohio Department of Transportation.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that ordinance number 5213 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 5213 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
And Mr. Teppin.
Yes. Ordinance 5213 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 5313.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the purchase of a large area mower.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that ordinance number 5313 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 5313 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
And Mr. Teppin.
Yes. Ordinance 5313 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 5413.
Amending section 436.01 of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 5413 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 5413 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes. Ordinance 5413 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 5513.
Amending section 436.04 of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 5513 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 5513 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
And Mr. Teppin.
Yes. Ordinance 5513 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 5613.
Amending section 436.05 of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 5613 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 5613 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
And Mr. Teppin.
Yes. Ordinance 5613 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 5713.
Amending section 436.07 of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President. Mr. Teppin.
I move that ordinance 5713 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 5713 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
And Mr. Teppin.
Yes. Ordinance 5713 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 5813.
Amending section 436.051 of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President. Mr. Teppin.
I move that ordinance 5813 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 5813 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
And Mr. Teppin.
Yes. Ordinance 5813 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 5913.
Amending section 436.071 of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President. Mr. Teppin.
I move that ordinance 5913 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 5913 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes. Ordinance 5913 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 6013.
Amending section 436.072 of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that ordinance number 6013 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 6013 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
And Mr. Teppin.
Yes. Ordinance 6013 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 6113.
I skipped one. Okay. Amending section 436.073 of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that ordinance number 6113 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 6113 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
And Mr. Teppin.
Yes. Ordinance 6113 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 6213.
Enacting section 436.074 of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that ordinance number 6213 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 6213 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
And Mr. Teppin.
Yes. Ordinance 6213 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 6313.
Enacting section 436.075 of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that ordinance number 6313 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 6313 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
And Mr. Teppin.
Yes. Ordinance 6313 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 6413.
Amending chapter 1266 to establish new flood damage reduction regulations.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that Communication 6413 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 6413 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
And Mr. Teppin.
Yes. Ordinance 6413 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. miscellaneous business. Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Few items this evening. First of all, Hope Neighborhood Association will be meeting April 2nd, a week from Tuesday at 6:30 at Unity. A reminder coming up Sunday, April 7th, from 2:00 to 5:00. There'll be an open house at the new Neighborhood Resource Center through Lacknip, and that's at 1440 West Spring Street. And just also a reminder of the Ottawa River Cleanup Saturday, April 27th, starting at 9:00 a.m. to noon, and you meet and sign in at the Red Cross Allen County Chapter on South Collat Street. Also wanted to make mention that in Sunday's paper, and if I could, Mr. President, I'd like to have Ms. Odom come up and make mention of this that was put in the paper. It's the 2013 Seasonal Public Notice of Order to Comply. How many are listed? 500?
Yeah, Mr. President and council members, what Ms. Adams is referring to is the seasonal notification of order to comply with weed cutting. Even though it snowed today, it is traditional for us to issue for April through October an order to those persons who have not complied with orders to cut their weeds over twice in the previous year, meaning if we've had to go out and cut their lawn twice and they have not replied in any way, they end up on this list. What this does is by this public notification, we will not be sending a notice to maintain their property to them each time it needs to be cut. That saves you, the taxpayers, at least $95 each time it occurs, and there are over 500, I believe it's 520-something this year that are on that list. By doing it this way, it is a great cost reduction for the citizens of Lima, and it is public notice. So hopefully people will share that with their friends and family if they see a familiar name. Thank you.
Thank you. And then finally, being that this notice was for, you know, in April, next Monday's April Fool's Day, and I think it came early today. So I don't know what we're going to be in store for next week, but that's all I had. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn.
Mr. President, I got a couple things. Hey, Amy, I have another question for you with this list. How long does it take? Because I looked on the list, a lot of folks been there for like 10 to 15 years, and some of the property been gone. We still title that? The city still responsible using their names? Or is any way we can get rid of that problem? But we still paying money for these properties, and some of the folks now passed away on that list. They long have been gone. I see foreclosures, I see all that.
Sure. Mr. President, council members, we are required by law to notify the titled owner of that property. So if that title still remains in that person's name after they're deceased, the family needs to probate that property or do something to clear that title. The city does not own these property. We do not take title to these properties unless it's a property of interest, at which point if it is tax delinquent, we go through our land bank program to acquire it.
Now, none of them are hitting on land bank no time soon, right?
And if someone expresses an interest, if there is a public use in that property, if you see something there, we can work with you to find out if it's tax delinquent and would meet the criteria for land bank. But as you can see, there's over 550 properties. We're not going to acquire them if we don't have a need for them. It still remains responsibility to owners. It still remains responsibility of the owners.
Thank you. And second of all, I appreciate the kids this past weekend. They did run around, pick up some of the trash around there. We had like 36 bags. Got kind of cold outside, so the kids, we had peace. I appreciate everyone coming out, and I know I got to go through Mr. Sheila to pick the bags up, because I left a couple of them out there, and I couldn't pick them all up in my truck there. But we'll make sure that we get them back. So I know some people had called me, said, "When are you going to pick this up?" But it was nothing but paper. I think some of that can be in Waste Management. You can put in your trash can. So I'm going to ask someone to get that done. Also, I'd like to thank the people who's working on Kiwi Corner. And I know Ms. Adams, we have some things on the Main Street Corridor, and that's real good. It's exciting to see proper steps that taking right now, and I hope to see that move faster and quicker, and that's very exciting. I don't have a report on the Cadet Program. You know, I get that ready to go, and I appreciate Paige taking over. When I was a little late, I was late getting here, and some of the things there, but some good things came out that I think we can work with, working on minority hard. So I think, I know we didn't have no news media here for both meetings there, and I know I talked to some of the folks at church and told them we are working on it, and some of the questions they asked about it. But we still going to be, keep our nose to the ground and work with the administration and work on that problem. Been here for a while. Also, and I want to let, and I'm not calling houses drug houses. I know a couple said they will contact the mayor and the chief about me riding around. I'm allowed to ride around, and there's no time limit on me to drive by your house, and that doesn't mean, I want to explain something, it doesn't mean I'm saying your house is